All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, August 12th, 2025 meeting of the new land and planning board. We will go ahead and get started. Just a reminder, as always, we're recording so you can watch this later till your hearts delight. Adam's going to jump in and get us started as we talk to give us a bit of an explanation about CIP tonight. So thank you all for our extra guests who are here. Much appreciated, the scheduling.
Thank you for everyone coming tonight. It has proved very difficult to find our normal morning meeting times when committee members are available at the same time as department heads. So since we didn't have any applicants for the planning board meeting tonight, we thought that this would be best, and so thankfully. Sure. And so since Beebe and Charlie were able to join us tonight, we thought it would be best to just wrap everybody into it. So thank you for your flexibility. And I know there are probably a couple of you thinking you thought you got out of having to participate in the CIP committee. So sorry about that, but thanks for coming. So as most of you remember, last year we got new finance software. There's still a steep learning curve. We're having some issues with the capital side of it. From essentially creating, promoting the projects from last year to this New Year's budget. So we've had to kind of rig something together in the meantime so that we can get started until we get this figured out. So what you see in front of you is essentially we exported one of the reports from last year's CIP into Excel. As close as it can get to it, but I'll do better, Mary Ann. So we exported one of the reports into Excel. The report is essentially a picture, so none of the formulas came out of the software. So when you see totals in here, they don't represent anything at this moment. Right now, this is the data collection process, so the projects are what you want to look at and the project prices. But the totals at the bottom, as soon as we started playing with the different subsets, those numbers are irrelevant now. We're working on it. Hopefully, we will be able to get all of these put into the software. And then subsequent meetings, we will just be working out of the software so that we're not then having to go back and add things in at the end. But this is where we're at right now. So things that are highlighted typically, green will be things that are removed or completed. And yellow will be new things to turn your attention to. I am realizing that a couple of these, the colors got changed, switched around on. So more or less pay attention to the color is something to draw your eye to it. And Emily and Sam will explain what the action is there as we go through. And then as far as the other town committees, stay tuned. Appreciate you staying flexible as far as your schedules go. And if you have any blackout dates when you're not able to schedule, if you could just keep me up to date on those, we'll try to get the next one scheduled as soon as possible. So with that, if Chief Cobb wants to jump into the police department's updates, I believe they all start on page two.
Thanks, Adam. Thanks.
Also a downside to the software, it printed them all as page one. There are four pages, so bear with us.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My portion here is, there's only a few items here that pertain to the police department. And you'll see under, it starts with 068, new police facility on new land. And then directly below that, land acquisition, closing, planning, design, et cetera. So given all that has happened here in the last few months, I thought it would be appropriate to push that out to a couple of years from now. So you'll see as far as the land acquisition portion, it was in 2026, the amount of 2 million. But in consultation with Adam, we decided to move that out to 2028 at least. I don't know if it would actually happen in '28, but there's some other things that are certainly more, that are pressing on the town's needs at this point, so we decided to put it out a couple of years. And we did increase it to 2,250,000, just because we don't know what the cost of land might be and if those costs are going to increase or what the case may be. And so that then kind of falls in line with the new police facility on new land to the tune of 9.5 million. That was also pushed out from 2027 to 2029. Again, that's kind of a moving target, depending on what else happens at the town level with some of the other needs that are before the town. Are there any questions or desire to talk about those two items before I move on? Charlie?
Oh, sorry, not my meeting. Somebody else can call.
We should ignore the 2 million in 2026 and 2027, correct? Those are just redundant?
Correct. I just didn't want to eliminate them when we made the change in cost so that you could see what it was.
Okay. The... So let me just restate, my understanding is that these numbers are represented. The 2,250,000 factors an estimate of cost increase over a two-year period, which is a little bit better than 10%, so about 5% per year. And that's a reasonable, logical assumption, it seems. The 9.5 million, the basis for that number was what?
Well, that's what was on it last year. I don't know if you want to speak to that, but we left, well, we left that in there because that's what was in in 2027, but I think that was more of a guesstimate at this point, so. Oh, good.
I'm, I think that's coming from where we came up with the number of the total project not to exceed $10 million according to our fiscal policy.
Okay.
Yeah. So that might change as our bonding financing moves along this schedule. Is it, I'm kind of under the bias that the 9.5 million is low. Because you're going to have, clearly, we will have, now that would be three years out. And I would suggest we inflate that at some assumption set. And I've been a kind of a proponent of trying to detail our assumptions, realizing these are projections, not detailed analysis. But there's a basis for a number. So that when we get to the point of actual expenditure determination of bond need, we have a, we have a set of assumptions to support the number that was in the capital plan itself. The actual number could be materially different, realizing this is a planning document, not a budgeting document.
On a funding source, yeah.
Not one or a funding source. So I would advocate for raising the 9 million, nine and a half million.
What assumptions would you use to raise?
I would, at this point, since I don't know enough, I would assume an inflation factor that's compounded each year from the, from the present out. And, you know, those are all stabs, of course, but I would, that would be the only assumption I could make because I don't have enough detail to support any other kind.
Would you ever do a range in a CIP like this?
When we used to be purely Excel, we could, we really can't do that in the planning software. It works in whole numbers.
Okay. So I guess in that case, would you err to the side of caution and?
I would recommend, just because I like the number 4%, if you, 4% for the, for the 2028.
Emily?
I would go with 5%, actually, because 2027 is not far away. We're only a year from that. So if you went at 5% and then another 5%, but compounded the 5%, that's just simply a math exercise, which would get us north of 10, 10 million.
Do we have the, the LBA numbers from, because we wouldn't have had those when we finalized the CIP last year. So we might have some numbers that are closer than, than what we were estimating last year. So maybe we need to pull this out. I mean, obviously, the site costs are unique to that property that probably are irrelevant at this point. But from a construction standpoint, I don't recall off the top of my head what they, you know, like Beebe said, that there is the, trying to stay within the $10 million cap. But those might be a good basis to start at last year and then apply Charlie's factors to see what that totals out to be three fiscal years down the road from.
Yeah, yeah, that's sort of what.
Mary Ann, you have a question?
Give us some more realistic perspective, I think.
Yeah, that's, thanks, Charlie. Mary Ann has a question. Can you just grab the mic from Charlie?
Usually just start talking. I've not been really involved in the capital, the development of the capital budget or capital projections in the last couple of years. And I'm wondering if it makes sense to have notes attached. You know, sometimes you see that in, when you look at annual reports, you know, for major corporations. And I'm wondering if it would be possible to have side notes that indicate what the key assumptions are so that, you know, you're not just looking blindly at a 9.5 million. Not to, not to pick on you, Emily, but does that make sense? Or would that invite too many questions and discussion about the assumptions that might not be relevant?
As far as making sense, I think that's something that can be discussed from a questica standpoint. I don't believe in the capital module that we have the ability to put in a narrative. In the budget module, we do have the ability to put in a narrative, but I don't think the project.
I agree with that thinking. Maybe it could go into the narrative because we're going to really do major capital expenditures with a little more explanation of, this is an alarming number, or it's a X number. Maybe there we could say the basis for the number is the following.
Yep. And that's a fair point, Mary Ann. I think to what Charlie just said about the, if you remember the narrative we do at the end of this process, that sort of is the, the written portion where we actually explain the projects and things like that. I think it'd be a good idea to include some of the thinking to your point behind that. It doesn't help us right now in this moment, but we at least have the discussion in the room to sort of give people the context. But yeah, that's a, that's a fair point. Paul?
I want to say I agree with Charlie's point about taking real numbers and adding an inflation thing. I was not involved in the last part of the discussion, I think, with, with the Budget Committee. And I'd like to go back to what Beebe said about not to exceed 10 million. That my assumption when I heard that was that there was an element of design limitation that the Budget Committee and the selectman, select board was inserting into the process. And so I just, I just wonder from Charlie's point, you know, if, if we go and say 9.5 becomes 10.5 or 10, 11 or whatever, are we still talking about a design element and a limitation on what we're going to aim at? I may not have described that accurately.
I'm looking at Beebe because she'll remember the numbers a little better. But here, my understanding was the fol, is the following. There was a projection of total project cost in at around 14.7 million. Just comes out of my head. I don't know where it got originally, a 14.7 million. When that number was represented based on architects and others involved in that estimate, along with the advisory committee, the warrant article was also in the thinking of the select board at that time and certainly the budget committee. So it arrived at 10 million on the assumption that the debt level was the driving force behind that. And that in the event that that warrant article was approved, then it would require a modification of design to accommodate a $10 million expenditure. So it's a carton horse.
You explained what I didn't explain as clearly, but that was my understanding. And my only comment is, are we following that approach when we just say, well, everything's more expensive? Or inflation? In other words, what, if, if we followed Charlie's suggestion and the 9.5, I haven't done the math, became 10.5, is, are we assuming that the bond element that was a limitation is also increasing to that degree?
Well, potentially, we could be paying down other debt so that we would have the flexibility, correct? I mean, that's the idea, that if things change the.
And we're rolling off debt in the next couple of years.
Right. That's what I'm saying. We're paying down, so therefore the calculus changes because our, we kept, we were running into the ceiling essentially for the town, overall borrowing capacity. And if that ceiling changes, there's maybe more flexibility for this project. I mean, I think a lot of us thought at the time it was going to be really challenging to pull together something at that budget level without doing some pretty extraordinary trimming, you know. But does that make sense to folks? I don't want to necessarily spend too much time on it just because I think it's ultimately something we're pushing out a little bit, but are you folks comfortable with that?
My only reason for bringing it up is I think that there's a lot of focus on exactly that point. And if we inflate it, we ought to be sure that we explain why and what, what that means.
Agree.
I think that makes sense.
Yep, she has the communications towers to mention.
Yep, that's what I'm saying. Do we feel good to move to communications and other things?
Yes, yes. So.
Thanks.
Yep, the communications tower, you'll see, it's outlined in green. And that was placed on this document a few years ago at the request of one of the former selectmen. And I think that it would be wise to take it off at this point. We're not looking to replace or repair our communications tower in light of this other project that might take place. So the communications tower was inserted on this document, I think, before we had really placed, or maybe it was the same year. Do you remember? It was a few years ago, and forgive me, I just don't remember all of the details. But I think it can come off because there's not a plan in FY27 to do any work, replacement, repair, otherwise, to the communications tower at this point. I think it would be responsible to wait and see what happens with the police department as opposed to doing that kind of work to a tower. So I think that can come off. And then plus, I do remember from that meeting, when it was added, that was purely a guesstimate on my part. That was not based on any real hard numbers. So that, those numbers unfortunately were not rooted in any sort of quotes or deep intimate knowledge of computer or a communications tower work.
The facility projection of 14.7 million did not have a tower in it, did it?
Oh, I think it did. Yeah.
It did have it. So it was there.
Yeah.
And I think that when this was put in originally, it was almost just put in as a placeholder of some maintenance level having to be completed on the tower, but it was not tied to a specific event and specific project. And so the conversation I had with Emily today was, if we don't have some specific project to complete, it shouldn't be in there. There may be, you know, maybe there's a capital reserve or something that needs to be started. I don't know. But, but if there's not a planned action, it shouldn't be in the CIP.
So that can come out. And then the replacement of the dispatch consoles. The consoles are the radios. They're the touchscreens that the dispatchers touch on and use in order to transmit over the radio. Those were installed in 2014, 2015, around the time after the dispatch study had been completed and the town had decided certainly to maintain and keep the dispatch center. And so major capital investments were made to the dispatch center at that time. This being one of them, the dispatch consoles. And so they were brand new, state of the art at the time, but certainly 10 years on plus, some technology has changed, I'm sure. And so that was a quote, or not a quote, I haven't gotten a formal quote, but an estimate that I've received from our vendor was $350,000 for the new, the two dispatch consoles that we have. There is a dispatch, I mean, and I know we don't talk about funding sources here per se, but there is a dispatch capital, capital reserve account. I don't know exactly how much is in that. I think about 200,000, 215, perhaps. I'd have to ask Lynn that final number. But I don't know that we would be needing to raise an appropriate, all $350,000 of that. But again, that's for, up for a lot of discussion if the town were to choose to go forward with the dispatch consoles in FY27.
Emily, is, is the expenditure on consoles something that can be deferred versus it's mission critical? We do this and we do it on this particular year?
I don't know. The, the consoles themselves are mission critical. Whether or not they could be put out another two years is a conversation I have to have with the vendor. But that's something that I had talked to him about a couple of years ago, which is why it wasn't FY27 because they're going to be over 10 years old at that point and, and ready for some, ready for a look. But I'm happy to come back with more info if the board desires it.
It might be helpful, I think, back to certainly Paul's comments about the need for information around the entirety of the facility of which dispatch is a part would be helpful.
Yep.
Just as the dialogue keeps continuing about, how much is this going to cost? When are we going to spend the money?
And those consoles, whether we stay where we are or go somewhere else at whatever point in time are all transferable. So those would either stay right where we are or go to a new spot if that was the case.
Yeah, if you can just grab the mic. Thanks.
This, everybody may laugh at this question. These consoles that you're talking about, would they be movable when the new police station is built? Or is it one of these things that they'd have to rip out walls and change the wiring and that sort of thing?
They would be movable. So whether we stay there or we go, went somewhere else, we would be able to take that equipment with us. I think that wraps it up for my portion.
Thank you, Chief Cobb. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions from the board on that? Yeah, thanks very much. She just had a call come in. Thank you. It's good to go first. So up next is going to be Sam Clark.
So if you want to flip back to the first page again, well, Sam's first equipment stuff starts there, or the buildings, I guess, facility stuff.
All right. As some of you know, or probably all of you, that we had the municipal building study done, which probably shaped and modified this quite a bit. I think that it continues to be a work in progress and we're going to see that kind of happen over the next few years as we kind of get into projects more and start unwinding these buildings a little bit and digging into them. But this is kind of our first big attempt at it and going through this document, trying to figure out where we want to land as far as numbers go, projects, and then priorities of like, what needs to be done, what can wait a few extra years and, you know, what is absolute priority? So the first one we start with is the Whipple Hall roof. That was originally planned for 2029. We actually moved it to 2027 based on the report that we received and then also what we see going on with the building itself, whether it be in the attic or on the outside. It does say Whipple Hall roof, but that includes work to the gutters, sofa, ice belt, snow guard, chimney flashing, and cupola flashing and cupola roof, that $200,000, which is based on a quote we did receive to do the work from a company that works on slate roofs in historic buildings. So that I think is going to be probably our biggest one for buildings and then probably the number one priority of the report besides what we've found at Public Works and some of these smaller buildings that we're working to address shortly. I don't know if, based on some of these being new and a little bit more financially heavy, if we want to go line by line and stop after each one to, if there's questions, instead of going in large chunks or.
Whatever you think makes the most sense, I think, is fine. I think people can jump, you know, just raise your hand if you have questions and we can stop you if there's something.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So the quote was received when?
Three, four weeks ago. It wasn't a long.
So it's a recent.
Yeah, we received, we originally got the quote from this company like four years ago when the inside of this building was being renovated. And then we actually reached back out to the company and said, hey, can you come back out and update the quote for us? And they came out and did all that. And they actually used like a drone and everything to kind of see the intricacies of the roof and all that in general. So, yep, it is, it is current.
Good to know. Thank you.
Yep. All right. Fire station driveway paving, that hasn't been moved. It's just been reduced from 67,000 to 50,000. That's just based on more real world numbers of what paving is costing right now, so that's great. The fire station furnace was moved back a year, so it was from 2031 to 2030. And that's just based on age and it's starting to have some problems and we don't want it to become a money pit.
Can I back up the paving?
No, please.
One of my favorite subjects, but the, that macadam, you and I talked to a sidebar a while ago about it. You indicated it absolutely needs to be done. We're going to have repair, we're going to install a solar array on the building. That means vehicles and other traffic, et cetera. How does the, the paving project fit with the other items that are going to be taking place at that site over the next few years? Because we're going to have the potential of an addition as well.
Yeah, so that's something we kind of took into account for this. So there's kind of two ways to look at the pavement as far as like police building, this building that we're at, the parking, the pavement here, and then the fire station. And you could either do nothing with it until the fire station had an addition put on and basically rip up everything because it's been destroyed due to construction, which is what some people choose to do or some companies. Or we could shim and overlay it, which is a standard like preservation practice, and then protect it when construction's done, but it would buy, it'd be cheaper and it would buy you more time with the pavement. So after we do this shim and overlay in 2027, if that's what we choose to do, then when the construction happened, I mean, the solar panels wouldn't be construction that would damage the, but, you know, a potential building addition could. They would plywood it, cover it, and then protect it from being damaged by excavators and things like that. I think you're better to invest in just doing a shim and overlay now. And then, you know, probably in 15 years, you would end up ripping the entire driveway up and replacing it when it's that just complete end of life. So, does that make sense?
Yes.
And the solar panels will be completed prior.
Yeah.
So they'll happen in this fiscal year versus this paving will be in the next fiscal year.
That's happening soon. And that shouldn't, to your point, Sam, won't be.
Yeah, it shouldn't be impactful to, I mean, probably the most impactful thing to that pavement is actually the fire trucks on it because it's heavy trucks turning tight radiuses on pavement. And that's why the worst of the pavement's kind of out front, so.
Great. Thank you.
Fire station furnace, like I was saying, that got moved up in priority just based on it's kind of starting to give us a little bit of a problem. The quote on that's kind of in the wings. I haven't heard back, so that number could be adjusted later on. We're finding that a lot of our furnace and AC prices are coming back much more competitively and lower. So that's been great. You'll kind of see that. That's a trend throughout this as we kind of go through. The highway truck garage boiler, that was completed in budget year 2025, not 2026, because it completely failed last November, I believe it was. So it was kind of non-optional. It was completed for $82,000 versus the 85 that we thought. But we actually did a redundancy system, so there's two boilers that are there now for essentially the price of one, which was, worked out well, and it's 30% more energy efficient, which we're already seeing. So that is very good. The fire generator, we actually moved out just based on real world replacement of generators. We see it in wastewater a lot and also just on these buildings. These generators end up going longer than they are intended to. And we just base it on how much is this, how much is this utility costing us to maintain, repair, things like that? Part availability is still good, and so we're not as concerned about it. You'll see.
I was just going to add on the generator. We did have the conversation today, or yesterday, whenever it was, about the fire department expansion. And obviously, it.
whenever it was, about the fire department expansion. And obviously, additional square footage and additional load could change the size of what you need for a generator. So I think that's something that we can expect. Each year we'll sort of be reassessing based on what the, the maintenance has been. Obviously, the fire department can't be without a generator, so it may be that when, you know, if it ends up that it has to get replaced two years prior to an anticipated expansion, that it pays to oversize it at that time. But it's probably not something that we can, at this point, reliably say can be pushed out to the expansion. If each year it seems like it's continuing to, to do okay, then maybe that's a reassessment that can happen, and, and it could happen simultaneously. But we didn't think just making that decision now was wise.
And something to kind of back up that comment and data is that our wastewater generators that run your entire wastewater utility and keep wastewater flowing throughout the town are 1980s generators, whereas this is like a 2000 generator. So that's based on risk and all that, and how much it's costing us, part availability, things like that. Those are now getting replaced under a grant, but, yeah, so...
Excuse me. You mentioned the other generators, 1980. What is the useful life for those? The estimated useful life?
Uh, standard generator's 30 years, but they've been reliable and have not cost us a lot of money. And they actually ended up getting the grant program through DES. It's a grant slash loan program. So it was better that we waited and ended up working out, so...
Good. Thank you.
I think we're at the town office carpet. That was increased from 15,000 to 50,000 based on how much carpet is in that building and just kind of what the useful life of it is left. I actually have an employee that worked, worked for floor craft, so they kind of were able to say, the $15,000 is not going to do you much good in a building that needs commercial flooring. So that's where you see the increase there.
I think we skipped the town office generator, Sam?
Yep, yep, I did. Thank you. Town office generator, we had moved from 2027 to 2029, which would put it at about 30 years old. And again, like we've been saying, we'll kind of assess that as we go, and if we can move it one more year based on part availability, things like that, we will do our best. So then we're...
Sam, just generally, in regard to generators, technology's moved a long way in generator-type development capabilities. Is there any, anything that you know of where generators can be co-mingled? So you have proximity, not close, but not far, where a generator central could be used to power two buildings versus separate generators for the...
Yeah, like how you have this building so close to the town office, like could one generator basically power this building and the town office?
Yeah, and/or...
I'm not aware of anything like that. Doesn't mean that we shouldn't look into it and see if there is an option. I hadn't thought of something like that, but that's an interesting take. Yeah.
I, I don't know enough about generators, but I do know that technology's moved quite substantially.
Yep.
And there's, are these propane?
Uh, we have all diesel generators, which seems to be a good thing based on, Sunapee has all propane generators, and they have had to replace theirs like years earlier, and they've been very problematic. The nice thing about diesels is diesel motors have been around for such a long time. They're just tried and true. And the motors, we've stuck with cat generators for a long time because cat stands behind their motors for an extremely long time, and they use them in other pieces of equipment. So the generator motor that's out here is also in dump trucks and excavators and all that. So it's not just a specific generator motor where like Kohler and companies like that have a motor that only goes in generators. So when they decide to move on from that motor, part availability's kind of just out the window. So we are fortunate that a lot of these all have cat motors and they're cat generators. So... I think we are down to the town office HVAC system. That was moved from 2032 all the way back to 2027, but was reduced from 75,000 to 48,000. The 48,000 is based on a quote I received about a month ago. The reason that we got the quote was, of course, on a very hot day, the AC went out, and we had to get a company in to come look at it. They, the company that we use is, we contract with to do all of our preventative maintenance and service programs, and they said, there is no more parts available for these AC units. And what ended up happening was actually a hole in the condenser, and they had to braise it and have one of their specialists come in and braise it just so there could be AC. So that definitely gets bumped up on the priority list, but also had a nice reduction from 75,000 to 48, just based on real world prices. So...
Sam, a quick question on that.
Yeah.
Could heat pumps work in that case instead?
We asked about that, and he seemed hesitant based on the electrical load of the building and how, where everything's placed. But I think it's something that we can definitely explore some more and push back on a little bit. So I think it's...
Yeah, and just because they also work so well in shoulder season, too. I mean, I know, I have residential versions, and I know that's different than commercial, but they work really well.
Yep. And this is also the, like, forced hot air for the building, too, is run through these same units. So, yeah, maybe...
Right, just like heat pumps, right, which do both. Yeah, exactly. Okay, just wondering, because they also have a lot of, a lot of them have the...
Rebates and stuff.
Some rebate, I mean, those are going away, but also the ability to remove humidity from the air is a big, even without AC mode, a lot of them have just like moisture removing mode, which makes the huge difference.
Yeah, which definitely may be beneficial, too, because like Archives has multiple dehumidifiers.
And just like, yeah, and you're not having to run the AC part all the time, and it's less, it's more efficient to just move heat than create it, you know, so...
I will say, as a user of the building, my experience has been it's somewhat nice to have the redundancy because the second floor is entirely on heat pumps. And so there have been times when one system is out and we're sort of limping along on the other. And there's been a couple of times in the very cold part of the winter when the heat pumps upstairs have not been able to keep up. We have the minimal heat, you know, obviously downstairs rising from the propane system.
That's a great point.
Yeah. All right. Town office furnace, that's kind of the next one. It's a 2034, reduced from 65,000 down to 20,000. That's not based on an exact quote. That was based on a, while the gentleman was in the building doing the quote for the HVAC system, he looked at the furnace as well. I said, what's the ballpark number on that? And he said, it's basically a residential on-demand unit. So he said around $20,000, which we had previously had 65,000 in there. So again, I think that's good news.
Sam?
Yeah?
Have you explored using splits as opposed to an integrated HVAC system?
That's what we were just talking about.
Is that what you just said?
Yeah, heat pumps.
Yep, that's what heat pumps.
I didn't understand that.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, heat pumps and mini splits are the same thing.
Oh, I didn't know.
Yeah, yeah, so they all...
And that's what the upstairs at the town office is now. Those were done in 2017.
Yeah, so Marion has a question.
Yeah?
I have a question about, what dollars are these in?
Today's dollars.
For today's dollars?
Today's dollars.
Okay, there needs to be a note somewhere that indicates that all of the projections are in 2025 dollars.
Okay.
Because under no circumstances is it going to cost $20,000 in 2034. But, you know, depending on the rate of inflation...
I believe that's articulated in the narrative, so that's, that is part of it.
Yeah, that was just what I was advised to do last year per one of the select board representative for that, so...
Of course.
All right. The next major one, this is just a totally new line based on our buildings report, which is the Elkins Post Office. The report has many pages on the post office and its needs and requirements. We put 135,000 in there. That's kind of lumping multiple projects together. The building needs a decent amount of work. We don't know the exact year it was built, but it was 1900s is what the report believes. And then on top of that, it has some structural problems that aren't as structural as like the highway facility, but floors need attention, whether that be new flooring systems, roofwork, things like that. I think that's a bigger question that we'll bring to the select board when the time comes to figure out what the process or what the town would like to do in regards to continuing to have the post office there, or if they feel that building is worth putting hundreds of thousands of dollars into, or could we, you know, remove it and then build a smaller, new building that, you know, isn't as costly as maintaining a building that's 100-plus years old. So...
Sam, do you know if the postal service has signed a contract for that building? They hadn't.
Yeah, as far as I know, they're still on a month-by-month contract. And I know Kim had said before she left, they used to do like a five-year contract, then they went down to a three-year, then a two-year, and now they're just going month by month, which she believed, she couldn't really ever get out of them a direct answer, but was kind of like, maybe they were considering wavering on, do we want to continue to have the Elkins Post Office?
Exactly, yeah. Before we put any money into it, we should...
Absolutely. And I mean, this would be a difficult project to undertake anyways just on, how are you going to do major renovations to a post office that has P O boxes and all that? I'm sure the postal service deals with these things elsewhere in the country, where they probably have like mobile post offices. But we put it at 2030 because it gives us time to have those conversations with the postal service, but also it lumped together a couple smaller projects to just get things done all at once, instead of saying, let's do a $5,000 project here, a $10,000 project there, and then try to make it work. Instead, I think it just needs to kind of take a pause and address the building.
And this was just our curiosity earlier, but how much does the post office pay per month? Do you know?
Lynn wasn't here today, so we were hoping maybe someone...
So we couldn't ask, but...
Oh, okay. I think what they pay covers our costs with regard to heating, septic disposal, that sort of thing. And they do the snow removal. We don't, so that's good. But I don't think, I, the last time I recall what it was was somewhere around $12,000. Now, I could be wrong, but I...
Annually or a month?
Annually. And that would cover, I know it's not a lot. I think that would cover, it covers whatever expenses we have. I know it doesn't sound like a great deal, and it could be...
But from a capital expense, it's a...
Yeah. They could be paying a lot more. I'm not, I'm just not sure. But we are not subsidizing that building. I guess basically that's what I'd say.
Yeah. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions on that?
I do have a question, and I'm just looking for the background because I'm still new here. So what is our obligation with the U.S. Post Office? They make the decision about that facility?
Exactly.
Yeah, that means, I think, based on what I know, it's like a normal tenant situation where, you know, they're, I, they do things to the building at times, but they're not doing, like, they're not replacing windows and AC units and doors and things like that. Like the handrail needs to be replaced, and we're working with a contractor to get that replaced right now. So there's certain things I think they do, but it's not like they're, you know...
We did the roof.
Yep, we did the roof as well. Yep.
So are we losing money or breaking even?
We're probably breaking even. But the point is that the post office may decide, and they've talked about this, of closing rural post offices. And that, that certainly could happen. So we don't want to spend any money on that building until we know whether or not they're going to want to continue to use it.
I think Adam did dib that as his remote office, though, so if it could be renovated, I think he's going to want that much.
I'm okay with wavy floors, the summer waterfront office. Sounds nice.
No AC in the summer. Okay, yeah.
You felt that wind blow? You don't...
Yeah, please.
So the townspeople or the people in Elkins have no, no choice? They're going to have to do what the post office says they're going to have to do?
Yeah.
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 Okay.
It's called the federal government, right?
And there, there are occasionally, you know, there are other solutions to small post offices like that where they, you know, rent space within another commercial tenant. Obviously, there's not much commercial in that vicinity, but, you know, it doesn't, them not wanting a whole building does not necessarily mean that postal service goes away.
Okay, all right. Any other questions on that? Nope, okay. Here's the fun one. Department of Public Works complex, the, we put a $5 million placeholder in there. We don't really know. And so that is kind of an uneducated guess. It's based on visits to other public works facilities that have been done in the last couple of years. Hollis was done for almost $3 million, 2.8, I believe. And then we went to Guilford, who's doing a public works department this year, and theirs is 12.5 million. But they're two completely different complexes. And so I think, like I've said at the selectmen's meetings, all these, public works is very unique and usually built around what the town's needs were. So to try to compare us to Guilford or Hollis is very difficult. We also already have a 10,000-square-foot building that, you know, is existing, that's working for us. Obviously, we've lost space due to the front garage, so to say that we're going to spend $5 million, I just don't know. But we needed to put a placeholder number in there. I'm hoping once this RFP goes out and we start getting information back, this number can be adjusted, and we can come to you with better numbers in general. So...
And the reality is, it'll be next fiscal year, and so there's no time to plan anyways. So, you know, we're going to have to deal with this right away.
Right.
As we go.
But I think that, to the point earlier about, our narrative should reflect that information.
For sure.
Secondly, I think, if I recall right, at the last select board meeting, there was discussion about this item and also a suggestion that there be an inclusion of some accommodation for the possibility of a police facility in that location.
Absolutely.
Understanding there are similar limitations. However, that $5 million estimate does not include that.
No, it doesn't.
So we're looking at these numbers separately at this point in time.
Yeah, that's a good point, Charlie. I would agree. And we had originally taken that out of the RFP, just based on what Adam and I were seeing for the site. But I think the point is that if there was a way, we should have the professionals look at it and tell us that, yes, it could work or no, it couldn't. So, yep, you're correct that we are looking at it in two different places as far as money goes. The transfer station cottage, that one, I didn't even, we didn't even give you a placeholder amount because we just don't know. The building needs to have a structural analysis. We're working to get a structural engineer in to just kind of give us a heading. And so if he agrees with the buildings report that says, yeah, I think it should just get taken down, then we would have a different number from you. If he comes in and agrees with the town staff and says that, no, I think you're right, and we can just do some modifications and start renovating it, then I think it's going to basically be a maintenance number that starts showing up in the budget, not in a capital improvement.
Is the cottage, the one that as you face the bays for recycling, is on the right-hand side? What is...
When you drive in.
Excuse me?
When you drive in.
Yes, and when you stand there and look, it's still on the right. What, what function does that serve?
So currently, that's the bathroom facilities for the transfer station. It's storage of recyclables that really can't be outside or are difficult to house outside, like light bulbs and things like that. And then it's usually just a warmer, larger space for like lunchroom, kind of office space, work, things like that. So break room is maybe a better way to describe it.
We also store archived building permits, counts payable, various other papers there.
Yep. All right. Where am I? Okay. Wastewater main plant renovation. This is not based on a quote. This is based on just what we're seeing for work that needs to be done to the building in a few years. Some of that is siding. It has some like fiberboard clapboard that needs to be replaced. Most of the building is actually brick, so some of the brickwork will need to be repointed. And then there is a room that is called Headworks. It's where all the wastewater flows through, and so it's a very moisture-rich environment. And so the sheet rock was put in in probably the 60s when they renovated it back then, and just needs to be fully replaced with new like waterproof sheet rock and all that. So that's kind of an estimate based on my knowledge of construction and then working with my facilities employee as well. So...
Did I skip one?
Yep. Oh, yeah, Whipple Hall. Okay, yeah, thank you. Whipple Hall exterior repairs. This is kind of similar to wastewater. This building, obviously, is largely brick. And then it also has a large portion of marble on the outside of it, and trim and other work that will need to be addressed. That number is, again, kind of a semi-educated guess at what it could cost. When we get closer to that time, we will get estimates. It's also using the buildings report study to try to use various projects kind of lumped together to make it a larger project that makes sense to do, because we don't want to do trim one year and then repoint the brick the next and realize that, oh, we should have repointed the brick behind the trim at the same time. So just based on a little bit of education of everything we have.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
We've, we've put a lot of money into Whipple Hall. Why haven't, why haven't we have some of this stuff that you're talking about? Why wasn't it addressed when we were putting all thousands of dollars into this place? I don't understand why now, all of a sudden, 10 years from now, we're going to have to do some other stuff to it. I just don't understand the, the figures for that.
I guess the figures that I've put in here are based on our buildings report and then the information that I have from our facilities worker, and then the prior history. I guess I can't speak to what former public works directors chose to do with the building or what the selectmen chose to do with it at that time, but that was before my time.
And maybe Bibi or Gina will jump in and correct me, but my, my recollection, David, is, is when this project for the interior was happening... And maybe Bibi or Gina will jump in and correct me, but my, my recollection, David, is, is when this project for the interior was happening, that there were some budget constraints to work within and that the interior was the primary focus and the mechanical systems, and that the exterior work at that point was, you know, cut from the project to, to make it work.
Thanks, Adam. Yeah, Paul has a question. One sec.
Sam, Whipple Hall means what? This part?
Yeah, basically, well, I guess I consider Whipple Hall from like the bathrooms forward, and then the rest of it is Bukeur, as I know it. It gets a little bit confusing, and that's kind of the gray area, but kind of from the hallway forward is Whipple Hall, so.
And my question really was with Bukeur. It's not included in this, and we really have no plans or assessment of the needs?
Yeah, I was gonna touch on-
If it were not a police facility, okay.
Yep, we have, that's a good roll into kind of the next statement, is Bukeur was left off of the building's portion entirely. The facilities report points out many, many, many things that could be done and probably should be done at some point. Or if the building is being considered ripped off or torn down to increase parking or things like that, it wouldn't make sense to invest in major renovations and then have five years down the road when we do a new police station or whatever it may be for us to say, okay, well, we just put whatever X amount of dollars into a building that we're gonna, we want to tear down. I didn't feel it was my place to make those assumptions, and I think those are larger conversations to have with the select board and town administrator and such, so.
Related to that, there were many building flaws identified by various studies. And there was a statement made, and I can't recall what meeting, but it was something to the effect that the sewer septic backup issue into area of that building persists. And is that true? And could you elaborate a little more on that issue?
Yeah, so-
Because it's a five-year, we're talking police facility down the road here again, and that's an imminent or has been an imminent concern.
Yeah, so late spring, we had some additional work done to the plumbing. We, I guess, fired the contractors we'd been using before that we felt weren't doing satisfactory work and started with a new company that we felt was a little bit more reputable. And since their repairs are, that was done in late spring, there's only been two backups. Two backups, I kind of consider at normal use, we, as public works or facilities, deal with backups in town buildings. I won't say on a regular basis, but semi-regular, so I would consider that within normal limits. So I don't believe there is an issue that still persists. So I think it's been fixed. We have camered the system multiple times. The company that has done the work, Rowells, has come in and camered it, and they said, we cannot see any reason why you would continue to have an issue. So I don't think that at this time it needs any further work, but, yeah.
Did they say that they didn't anticipate any further instances of that happening after they had completed the work or in advance of doing the work? Because if, if they said it before we had the instances, it's sort of like null and void there.
I think it was actually both to a certain degree. They looked at the system, said it needed a certain amount of work. We had issues in between that. Work was done. They said it should not have any issues. It had a issue. We called Rowells back to say, it had an issue. What do you think? They looked at it, and I, probably the most appropriate word is, it was a user error, is what we believe, so. User error of the system. I don't know the polite word to use, but that's the best I got for you.
Well, I guess the, the point I'm trying to raise is that it, I wouldn't want to work in that environment.
And so I will say that, I mean, toilets clog in buildings all the time, right? I mean, that's something that we deal with on a regular basis, maintaining as many buildings as we do. The work that has been done has alleviated the issue of it backing up as extensively as it did before, based on how they put cleanouts in the floor and things like that. So it's much earlier detected, if that makes sense. I mean, it's kind of difficult to explain without showing you, but-
That's all right. One other question. Would more frequent maintenance of the sewer system, cleaning out the cleanouts and things like that, be beneficial?
No, because, I mean, with a system like that, you don't normally just have your pipes cleaned in your house for wastewater. So the system should be self-flushing, so to say, but like anything, there are occasional clogs and things like that, so. I'm glad I came from wastewater operations.
It's overwhelming to me, sir, that, that we have allowed public employees of the town of New London to live in those conditions. We heard one of them speak at the last town meeting, that there was still a problem with, with the septic system, and, and, and yet we expect the policeman to live in that condition. And I think that's unacceptable.
I mean, I think after town meeting, we had, was when the additional work was done. So it has really, like I said, I think there has been two issues. One was around the time of town meeting, and then there has been one since. And other than that, there has not been, because I would agree that that would be unacceptable. And we've continued to work, it's not like as public works or as facilities workers that we've just kind of said, well, that's too bad, you have a wastewater problem. We have, you know, continued to address it and tried to be as proactive as we can in working with multiple companies to try to do that.
I want you to tell me tonight that there's, the problem has been 100% completed and fixed.
I could not. I don't think anyone could ever say that about any plumbing issue.
David, I think what I'm hearing is that the problem had been identified. It was considered by all parties as unacceptable. Sam assumed his role, and one of the items that he has addressed is this situation in Bukeur. If he had not addressed it, we would see some kind of a capital expenditure here related to Bukeur. Because that was all deemed by all as a, as a, as a problem and one that needed to be fixed.
Yep, absolutely. I appreciate that, Charlie. Thank you. And in the building's report, it actually, when they were going through, was when we were still having issues, they put $150,000 price tag on doing repairs to the system if the issue had not been resolved. And we had told them through the process that we were actively working on having that addressed, so.
So essentially-
Hang on, Mary Ann.
That was the toilet alarm.
Essentially, what I'm hearing is that the timeline, now that we understand the timeline and what happened when, essentially what you're saying is there's no guarantee it won't happen again, but the chances are slim to none. And that you understand that it would, to continue at that rate, or even, you know, more than three times a year, would really not be acceptable. Okay.
I think the point of that, too, is if there, if the issue was to come back and we were to have to do something, I think I could probably say for the selectmen, too, that we would not allow it to just go to the next budget cycle because of money. I mean, there is always money in capital accounts for building facilities. The selectmen are agents to expend. And we would expend that money to address the issue if it was to present itself again and be like of something that we could fix. How's that? So it's, I would 100% agree that we could not allow people to be working in those types of conditions or uncertainties, so.
Thanks, yeah, that's helpful, Sam. That's great, thanks. We can move on now.
I think we're on to page two at this point. Just the sidewalk, well. Oh, wait, they're on, okay. You guys are still on the bottom of page one. I'm on page two. Adam gave me old data, so, you know, I'm working with the best I can.
I zoomed in the prints for you guys because the font was small.
All right, so at the bottom of page one for you folks, there's just a highlight on the text of the sidewalk projects. The narratives, or the brief narratives, didn't match up with when the project was actually happening and in the like steps that it was supposed to happen. We believe it was when it was up, it got uploaded to Questica, so that was kind of just an error that we corrected that was via the text. I think it's just important to note, to stay with this project, we are gonna either, we're in fiscal year '26 now, and we said we were going to do a section of sidewalk from the Cleveland's property or the Catholic Church down to Siemens Road within this kind of timeframe. So this, that project will still happen, be completed this fall or in the spring of 2026. It will still be within the 2026 fiscal year before the 2027 step starts. Hopefully, that makes sense. Did I cover that?
Yeah, so the, the first portion is undergoing right now because that's outside of the bonding area. So then the second half of that, once the bond is expired in October, will either happen, if construction season allows, at the tail end of this fall or at the, the end of the fiscal year, the start of next year's construction season. So it shows up as one project in the CIP, but we will see it as two separate projects within fiscal year '26 in real life.
And the bond that wastewater put up expires October 1st, is that correct?
I believe. I have to confirm that.
And the reason we haven't done anything is because we're afraid if there was an issue, that the bond wouldn't cover it. It would be our responsibility, not the water precinct's.
It could do damage to the sidewalk-
Right.
Yeah, that we just replaced.
And I, as I understand it, there has been an issue with, they had some problems with it, correct?
Yeah, they've had two, I want to call them breaks, but-
Claims.
Claims, that's a good way to put it, yeah. Claims, one of them was in the area that we would be doing work to the sidewalk. So I was glad that we had not started preemptively and, you know, then had maybe damages or disruption to our project happen. So that was a good thing and shows why it's important to wait till the end of a bond period, because they were just about at the end, and they had a leak up on, in front of Hogan Center, so.
My, this may be out of your purview. So my understanding of the bond for the Main Street water replacement was underspent by close to $1 million. And that that money remains in a reserve on the balance sheet of the water precinct. So if that is the case, I think those numbers are accurate. A million might be a little slight overreach, but it's substantial, it's a substantial amount of money. So that in the event there were a problem that was water main related, and the sidewalks were then replaced but needed to be disrupted, my assumption would, is that those monies in the water precinct would be used to both fix the problem and repair the sidewalk to its current state.
I was not aware of that, but that, I mean, that would make sense in the-
Don't agree with that, Jim?
No, I don't agree with it. I, I don't think you could count on the water precinct to do that. Once the bond expires, and if we haven't had a reason to ask for money, then the bond expires. I don't think the water precinct will feel obligated if we put in a new sidewalk and there's a problem to help us with it. I don't think that's gonna happen.
And they would have to, anywhere, whether there's a bond existing from the contractor or not, if there was a break that, that destroyed our sidewalk, they would be obligated to put that piece back. I think Sam's hesitancy is that you'd be cutting a section out of a brand-new sidewalk. And so while it might be back to, you know, perfect again, it would immediately mar the brand-new sidewalk. And so the benefit is to wait and hope that it's settled. And I'm not sure whether it is an insurance bond that the contractor kept or whether it's a, an actual cash bond that they have on the books. But either way, West, or what, is it West Construction, has it bonded?
Yep. And I mean, the other point, too, is like the one break that we, or two, actually, that we've had on Main Street that have affected the sidewalks, the water precinct did do the repairs that were necessary to bring them back to what they were or better. So it wasn't like they just kind of said, hey, that's your sidewalk, we're not gonna worry about it. They did do the repairs necessary, so.
David, you had a question?
So when we talk about sidewalks, it's all under one category, public safety. Is that correct?
I think it's actually highways and streets, because public safety, I think, actually ends above it, because public safety is for the fire department and police department, if I read this correctly.
So the public safety there, David, is totaling out the category above it?
Well, Sam, I just, I don't know where it is, but when you talk about sidewalks, this is, this is an issue that I've had for many years. I'm concerned about the safety of Main Street. I'm also concerned about the different intersections where people are crossing the street. For example, Newport Road, Little Lake Sunapee Road and Main Street. It's not safe for pedestrians to be crossing that street there. And, and I think a few years ago, we asked maybe for the state to come in and do a study. I think it was taken out of the budget. I'm really still concerned about the safety of Main Street and the intersections and people crossing the streets when it's, it's not safe for them to cross the street. And I, I would, I would love to be able to have a budgetary item that we talk about, the safety of Main Street.
I mean, I was just gonna share the corridor planning stuff.
Yeah, please, yeah.
So David, though it's not going to go all the way down Main Street yet, the state is undertaking a corridor planning process. This is the first time that they have implemented corridor planning on this scale. The first stretch unfortunately stops at the four corners, so it goes all the way from, I think it was where was where this corridor was starting. This first section of it was where to the Flying Goose. Sam and I met with the planner from the Regional Planning Commission maybe six weeks ago, and they're just starting that. Now, I would presume that this is phase one of their corridor planning process, and that phase two, they will build on the first corridor identifications. So that hopefully that means the state will then go from the Flying Goose to, say, Grantham or wherever they want to go on 114 as their stop. So I do think it's on the radar. Obviously, we have somewhat limited ability to control Main Street from a built, you know, design standpoint. But I think those are things, you know, Sam and I have been working on a crosswalk situation to hopefully get something back in there that hopefully will never rise to the level of a capital improvement project and one that we can implement sooner rather than later. But an intersection that I know is near and dear to your heart that we are starting a conversation on is the Pleasant Street, Main Street intersection. We had a conceptual, I think, at the last meeting from Bar Harbor to rebuild there, which has sparked a conversation of, could we get the state together at that time to realign that intersection as part of that potential redevelopment? You know, there's a lot of players that are in the mix there. The state doesn't always move as quickly as private landowners with a project that they're ready to break ground on. So no promises, but we are, you know, still, you know, trying to see if there are little, little spots throughout the corridor that we can move the needle.
Thank you.
I hadn't really been thinking about that intersection, but I'm glad you raised it, David, because I walk there a lot, and it is dangerous. And the drivers are quite accommodating, more so than I anticipated. But I'm wondering if we could temporarily install one of those blinking lights that indicates someone's crossing that happens across from Hannaford's that joins with, is it the gallery or something that's?
It's Hilltop. It's Hilltop and Hannaford's that it connects. I think those are things that could be looked at when we go through the sidewalk projects. So something that, to know is that the state doesn't see the sidewalks as their asset to maintain or worry about. Their asset to maintain and kind of upgrade, but they oversee it because it's within their right of way. So as we put in applications to do the work on the sidewalks, they actually review that, and then they'll come back to us. And we actually had a site meeting with them about the sidewalk situation that Adam and I were talking about, or crosswalk. And they said that as we continue to put applications in to do work on the sidewalks as we progress in our project, they will review it with us and then make recommendations based on crosswalks and line of sites and potentially doing upgrades for like maybe a flashing light or things like that. This year, we did undertake doing different upgrades, like making the crosswalks wider, adding the reflective beading, additional signage. And we've had really good feedback from drivers and pedestrians that it has made a difference. So, you know, all steps in hopefully the right direction.
And hopefully, Mary Ann, things like flashing beacons don't rise to the level of a CIP project, because I think that last one was 18,000?
10,000, yep.
Okay.
They're probably 18 now.
Yeah, and so that was like 2019 or so that that went in? So hopefully, when spots are identified for that and there's- So hopefully, when spots are identified for that and there's a whole state approval process because you have to have certain sightlines from them and they won't approve them at all intersections. And so we'd have to go through that. But hopefully, those are things we can undertake, you know, in annual budget operations.
I really think, I understand your point that it doesn't rise to the level of a CIP project, but I think it's still important in terms of public safety.
Absolutely. Yep, thank you. Are we on, are they on the second page now?
They are on page three if we go into the equipment.
Okay, yep. So we're going into equipment now, which is highways and streets. And the first thing you're going to come to is the small six-wheel dump truck. I just put no on there. That's what we call in Public Works, one tons, but they're not actually one-ton rated, so.
Do you want to talk about the Whitney Brook Road paving?
Oh, yep, thank you. Appreciate that, Charlie. There has been no change there since last year. Last year, we moved it out to 20, we really should have put the dates at the top of each page, but.
We tried to lock it and you can't change them.
I think it's 2030. But we had moved it out based on the residents of Whitney Brook Road did not want it paved. And so that's just going to take some more education on Public Works side as why you want gravel road paved versus remaining dirt, so. I've been told.
People should check out a VPR article yesterday about the detriments of dirt roads on water bodies and how it's carrying phosphorus into water bodies. I shared it with Sam and it's interesting. And I think something that may change perspectives on dirt roads long-term.
Right. And there is, just for everybody's edification, interested or not, but there's a specific formula that you utilize to determine price. And you might want to speak about that a little bit because this is a certain distance in terms of total footage.
Yes, so.
To arrive at a $225,000.
Yeah, the $225,000 was actually also based on an actual quote to do the job because the town was like ready to sign a contract to have the road paved that year. They had gotten the price they had locked in and residents had said, we just don't want it paved. And so Bob Harrington was still the Public Works Director and felt that based on the feedback he had gotten, it was not worth paving it. We do use a calculation every year and try to adjust it that helps us kind of base out what paving is going to cost per foot and per mile. It is a quick-moving target that is sometimes difficult to pin down. So I, we actually hosted a class in this room today through T Squared, which is a UNH, UNH class system. And I talked with the presenter about pavement preservation and also pavement costs and how he said that, you know, he's presenting on these and he's still struggling to give accurate numbers at times just based on the fact that it can vary so greatly from one company to another, especially companies like Pike and things like that, that actually house and run their own pavement plants or smaller companies that are buying it through Pike or Blacktop or through these other companies. But we try to use every year calculation and try to have a plan of what we're going to do for paving. So it's never just, you know, shooting from the hip for paving. That's also why our paving line has stayed 235,000 for many, many years or in that area. Whereas other towns have paving lines of 500,000 and I think we have some of the better roads around, so.
Thanks.
Thanks, yeah. All right. The small six-wheel dump truck, that is just a one-ton, so it's basically like the pickup-sized dump trucks, but we identify them as six-wheel dump trucks, small six-wheel dump trucks in here because they're not one-ton rated anymore. That got moved out one year. The price is 165. I actually don't have the note of what it was before. I believe it was 158. 158, I think. 158 to 165, that's just based on what we're seeing right now. Where we have a truck currently being built that is one of these small six-wheel dump trucks. And like, again, I moved it out just to try to keep it in the 12-year rotation. That one got moved one year closer, which was incorrect, so. Moving on to the backhoe, that was completed. We actually just received the backhoe a week and a half ago. And I'm happy to say that we came in at 186 versus 250 through some very constructive bidding and arguments over the price of a backhoe. And I'm pretty proud to say that we got it down to substantial amount. I think we're going to finish out at about 190 once we get the radio installed, light package and things like that. But that was, has been completed and is in service, so. The loader remains the same at the 307,000. The flail mower has been completely removed. We didn't actually remove it here, but it will be removed and we just were going to talk about it. The mower that it goes on or the tractor, we've sold and we've decided to start renting that piece of equipment on a yearly basis because to own this flail mower, they are very costly to maintain and the tractor to run them is costly to own and costly to maintain. When we can rent one for 7,500 to 10,000 a month and just do it once a year and be done with it, not maintain it or have to house a piece of equipment, so. The zero-turn mower has been completed. We took ownership of that a couple of weeks ago. That came in at around 14,000, so a few thousand underbid, which was great. Trash trailer, the first one remains the same at 170,000. What you see in the 2035 column is the added, for the new one, that will have to get replaced at the time. We have three trash trailers and these, those usually stay on a 10- to 15-year rotation. We are switching to all aluminum trailers. During COVID, we have to purchase an all steel trailer because the price of aluminum was, they basically told us it was $300,000. Or we can do it for your normal price of 180, so we had to do a steel. That one's a little bit hard to predict when it's going to need to be replaced because we haven't had a steel trailer in a while. We think it should still last 10 years with good maintenance. We've oil undercoated them and things, so I think we'll be able to stick to this program, but that's where we're at. Excavator remains the same at 270,000. If we can work the same magic for the backhoe, I'm hoping that that could come in underbid as well, so. Grader, we pushed out a few years. Ultimately, you guys heard last year me say that I would like to just not own a grader. If we continue to own dirt roads, we will always have to grade dirt roads. If we continue to whittle away at our dirt roads and our grader was to catastrophically fail and we only had two miles of dirt roads left, right now we have 4.1. We could always have a company come in and do it. There are multiple companies that own graders. They come out, they grade your roads, or we could rent one when we needed it. So it's kind of there as a placeholder and also kicking the can down the road a little bit, but in a good way. Because if we could avoid owning a three-quarters of a million-piece, dollar piece of equipment, that would be great, so. And it's less things to house. The tractor agricultural, that is the tractor that has the flail mower on it that has been removed. It's not purchased and we'll be auctioning the one that we have shortly, so. Okay, sidewalk plow. The sidewalk, we kind of went back and forth on how we wanted to state exactly what it was. And so sidewalk plow was the simplest way. That is what we purchased as the multi-hog. I think that was purchased in 2019, 2020. I actually don't know when it was purchased. I know it's a 2017, but it will need to be replaced sooner rather than later. So that's why we noted it in the 2032, I believe.
The number disappeared in there.
Okay, yep, it did. It has a zero there. So we had 220,000 there for the piece of sidewalk equipment. That is a specialty piece of equipment. So unfortunately, it doesn't really do anything except sidewalk equipment. It's not really multi-use. And so the problem with usually job-specific tools is they are rather expensive. It's just like street sweepers, they're very expensive, but they're job-specific, so they usually do a better job. That is a new addition of a line. The next line, as well as a new addition, which is the Skidsteer Sidewalk Plow. This is just a Bobcat Skidsteer that we own and it, it's kind of our backup or our second piece to our sidewalk clearing, but it also gets used for everything else. It's a forklift at our site now. It moves recyclables. It loads the sidewalk equipment with sand in the winter. So it's kind of a multifaceted tool. The one we have now is a 2,000 with like 5,000 hours on it. And it's still serving us pretty well, but we have to plan to replace it at some point. So that's why you see that 75,000 in 2028. Highway pickup, that one was not re-added after the most recent Public Works truck was purchased, or pickup, which is my truck. We kind of do a step-down program where we, the Public Works Director has a truck for five years. Then it goes to the road crew for five years and then we get rid of it. The current truck we have now in the highway department, that's the crew truck, is a 2015. And we actually just put a new aluminum bed on it and it's still in really good condition. So I see it kind of going for a little bit longer. And then putting in the note here, the change that I foresee happening is this number is substantially less than like what we paid for our wastewater utility truck because I would like to switch the Public Works Director from having like a one-ton truck to like an electric pickup or something like that. I kind of said today to Adam that I want to be the first department head to have an electric vehicle. But I think it would be a very financially responsible thing and also just, it makes more sense for me. I don't need to be driving around a one-ton vehicle all the time. So once that, my truck gets passed on to the road crew, then we would put a replacement plan in place for that. But those trucks, the one that I drive now is an aluminum body and it's, it has an extended warranty on it. So that truck may end up being a 15-year truck versus a 10-year truck, so we'll see how, what? Too bad. So we'll see what happens, but. All right, six-wheel plow truck. This is probably the most notable line from a cost standpoint. I did not catch this last year, but as trucks got replaced, the newest one being a 2020, they never got added to the capital reserves in and every other year increment. We keep these trucks for 12 years and then we try to replace them every other year. We just, at two-town meetings ago, approved the last of the five trucks and we're actually still waiting for it to be outfitted two years later, so. But it's similar to fire trucks.
So this, this is three trucks replaced within a 12?
We have five trucks total, but you're not seeing all five of them yet because this is only within 10 years, right? So the two that we just got won't need to be on this list yet. So the ones we have are a 2020, a 2022, and a 2023, 2022, two 2022s and two, and 120, sorry.
And, and Sam and I were sort of manipulating the, the replacement schedule on them because I think the history that we have is that we would have several years successively with truck, 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 and then no trucks for several years. So what we're aiming towards is getting closer to an every-other-year truck for a period of time. There's five trucks in about 12 years, so it doesn't work out exactly to every other year. But we'd like to get to a point where it's a little bit more predictable than we've got to buy five years in a row, $350,000 truck, and then nothing for seven years.
And these estimates, Sam, of 350,000?
Those are based on kind of what we're seeing right now. They initially, some of the quotes came back when I first took over as Public Works Director. We got a quote for over 350 for one of the trucks based on tariffs and such. And now it's gone down to we might be like $70,000 under that quote. So it's like so up in the air because most of the equipment comes from Canada. So I kind of based on the high side of that because we don't know what's going to happen. And like I said, I have three trucks that are currently getting built and they're up in the air. But I'm basing it on the high side because if tariffs continue, those are the real, those are today's dollars, I guess, still, so. Yeah? Please.
You have to go to Canada for these, these vehicles? There's no, no place in the United States that you can purchase these?
Oh, no, the truck is purchased in the United States. We're just buying a cabin chassis. So it's like the cab of the truck and then a straight frame. The company that outfits it with a body and the plow and all that, all those parts come from Canada. It's Viking Seves. They actually do a lot of in-house work where they fabricate like the plow frames and things like that in-house. But the actual plow itself and the bodies, all, most companies manufacture them in Canada. So I don't know if it's just.
And I believe that's because the steel is actually mined and, right?
Yeah, I would assume it's forged, all that, so. And Canada also knows what they're doing better than when we do for plowing. In many ways. Yeah, we all got locked out. A plan hasn't gotten us back in yet. Sorry. All right, that's the six-wheel plow. I think we just go down now to the sanitation, which is wastewater. I think this is still on you guys' page, which is the George's Mills Electrical Control Panel Alarm Upgrade. That is currently underway and is expected to be right around the 70 to 75,000 mark. So right on track for what we were initially quoted. Okay, yep. And then we just have the last one, which is the utility pickup truck for $88,000, which was, we just took delivery of about a month ago. And that is going to land exactly where we quoted it at 88,000, so. And I think that is everything I have, unless you guys have some other questions. Happy to answer whatever I can.
General question, Sam. At the last select board meeting, I think I heard you raise that the Anzalone report came with some 4.4 million dollars of building renovation. And that was an aggregate number for what period of time was that?
So that is what the report felt 2025 needed to.
Just 2025.
Just 2025.
And we've whittled that down to reflect here in 2025.
I think you're still going to see some of these things that fall outside of like capital projects. Adam might be able to kind of explain this better, but what I'm, you're still going to see an increase, especially in the facilities lines. But they don't raise to the level of capital numbers.
Right, so so much of what's in this report will be tackled under annual maintenance. So Sam's maintenance lines in his budget are going to go up dramatically. But the project, or could go up dramatically, I shouldn't say they will. But the projects themselves are $10,000 on a roof on this shed or, you know, various places so that they don't all, there's not really going to be a way to compare what the total in the CIP to the total in that plan.
Is there a way to just get a sum of order of magnitude? We started with a number of 4.4. I understand we're segregating that into, these absolutely have to be done. These are capital. There's a remainder that need to be done, but we can handle it in an operating budget expense line.
I haven't gotten to that extent yet to be able to give you a, a number yet because I guess I'm still so wrapped up in just trying to figure out what we're going to handle first. And that 4.8 million is difficult to even kind of use because like it has here highway department office, 1.3 million dollars. So it's like, it has a lot of projects that we're not even maybe going in that direction or taking on. Same with like the transfer station. It says we need $550,000. The highway department truck garage, which is our lower shop, needs half a million alone. So, you know, we could be talking, this, this document might say 4.8, but the real world might be a million or less. And there's also things that, this is all to make everything textbook new. And that's the way I'm describing it. And so at the last selectman's meeting, I kind of said, it can be ugly and work. And sometimes that's how municipal buildings are. And then there's also the issue of, this document would say that the cold storage garage at wastewater should be a capital item because it needs a roof, siding, windows and a door. And so that put it at like $68,000 or something like that. And we're doing the work for putting a new roof on it, painting it, replacing some siding and doing all of it for less than $3,000. So it's just hard to say, what is this going to actually correspond to in a number?
And from a work planning standpoint, I think maybe we also didn't touch on this as well at the selectman's meeting as we should have. But that the, the second half of this whole project is the iWorks system that will help Public Works to really plan the maintenance side of thing. And so that has not been rolled out yet, right? And that's, that's still, what, six months?
Yeah, probably. I mean, it's a lot of data entry and then it's kind of like Nancy's kind of done a lot of the data. She'll do the data entry and then what, then all I'll have to do is try to figure out what is a priority, what is not. And then some of that may be bringing it to the selectmen and saying, hey, you know, the Elkins Post Office needs this work. We got quotes. It is $200,000. What do you want to do? You know, do you want to proceed with that type of work or do we want to go back to the drawing board on things like that? But there are certain things that are just kind of no-brainers like here, like the roof needing to be done, the gutters, the soffits, the, all that. Like that, we know that that work needs to be done. And then there's some things like the fire station, we left off this year because there was, it needs siding replacement, all those things on the addition, which is now, I think that was put on 2004. But it wouldn't make sense to re-site an entire building this year and then say, oh, well, in three years, we're actually going to rip it all off to add an addition. So what we'll do is we'll work with Jay and we'll do some repairs and, you know, fix up what we can to make, we don't want the building to be un-presentable. But that may be $5,000 to get us by for three years. And then when the building gets renovated, that's when you're going to kind of tear and do it a little deeper, so. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it all makes sense. And I, I just, what's rumbling through my head is order of magnitude. And I, I just, what's rumbling through my head is order of magnitude in relationship to the other significant multi-million dollar capital expenditures that we're facing. And how do we think about prioritization? Some of what I hear you saying is, the Anzalone report was more than thorough and also put numbers that were replacing as new.
Yep.
Versus what we might schedule as you update the software, get it actively working in terms of both cost and prioritization. That magnitude will be smoothed out, I guess, is a better way of saying it.
Yeah, I think that's a great way to say it.
And minimized, or reduced possibly.
Yeah, and there's, I think there's points like, you know, architects and engineers have an obligation to say, this is what this needs to be correct in their opinion, or new again, because it has a shelf life or a useful life. And so every one of these buildings has these huge dollar amounts attached to electrical services. And so like the Buckland Beach Building, it says it needs a $60,000 electrical service upgrade, which is just the panel and like the wiring coming into the building. One, I don't think it'd cost that much, but I don't think anybody in their right mind just looks at some, an electrical panel and goes, yeah, let's just replace that, because it, it says it's, it should be in 25 years. You know, that's not really how real world works. But if you want everything to be brand-new and perfect, then yeah, you would replace that. But, you know, we're not having issues, the electrical services are to code, they're not outside of code, and they're safe. So that's one of those projects that you would probably address that when you did a major renovation to the building, not just in the year 2035, because a piece of paper says, well, you should do it, because it'll be 35 years old. So it's kind of muddling through all that, that's just like.
And even some of the aesthetic projects that add up, I don't remember which building it was we were looking at today, it might have been our offices, but the interior painting all landed in one year to a pretty sizable amount. But the reality is, offices get painted when there's a vacancy in the position and the office is vacant. We don't typically do that all in one, it's 2035, it's time to paint everything all over again.
Or acoustic ceiling tiles is one that's just becoming a huge pet peeve of mine, because there's probably a million dollars worth of acoustic ceiling tiles that need to be replaced if you go by this document. But you don't just walk in a room and say, well, those are 35 years old, let's replace them. You know, and if you are replacing them, it's usually in a maintenance program, because they got stained or like Adam said, there was a vacancy and, okay, we're going to kind of remodel this one room at a time. I don't think we could also, as a municipality of our size, just suddenly say, you know, we're going to clear out the town offices, renovate basically this whole thing, just because a document says we need new paint and acoustic tiles and carpet. We're fretting enough to figure out how are we going to replace the carpet in the town office and continue to do day-to-day operations, so. I think it's kind of a game that we're trying to figure out how to play right now, so.
Sam, that's amazing work and great detail. Are there any other questions from the board on that? Appreciate everybody's patience with this, appreciate all the detail, Sam, and your knowledge on this, especially as you're still relatively new and the job is really impressive.
Thank you.
Any questions from the audience tonight? Okay, Sam? Yeah, exactly, well done. Thank you, yeah, very, very much appreciate that.
So we'll be in touch with the next phase for the next department. And then hopefully, our target is still beginning of October to have something to pass on to the selectmen.
Yeah, not always an easy process, but it's, the fun thing about CIP is that you really get into the weeds and get to know a lot about, you learn a lot about the town, so I always do from these meetings, so appreciate it. Sam, appreciate you all coming.
And the next official meeting is September 9th, but we will have other meetings before then, so.
Yeah, exactly, after Labor Day, see you all, September 9th. We'll have, as Adam said, meetings that we scheduled before that. I think we just need a motion. Yeah, do you need a second? Do we have a second?